The Town of Berlin. Country charm at the center of Connecticut.
Welcome, everybody, to our April 18 Town Council meeting. If we could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, Kate.
Counselor Campanelli. Counselor Evans.
Here.
Mayor Kucinski.
Here.
Counselor Luddy. Counselor Peinessa.
Here.
Counselor O'Shea.
Here.
Counselor Russell.
Here.
Mayor, you have a call.
Okay, great, thank you. Our first part of the agenda tonight is where we always start our meetings with an audience of citizens, so if anyone here is in the audience wishes to address us on any matter, we're happy to hear that. So, since we're in that part of the meeting, anybody who wishes to speak to us tonight? I see no hands. But, Mr. Argosy, I see some Boy Scouts in the audience. We're glad to see them here. What do we owe this pleasure?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry to do that.
You know the drill.
I know you just wanted to sit back there, but I wasn't gonna let you do that. Sorry, we can't do that.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. With me this evening are several members of Boy Scout Troop 256. We are taking the citizenship and the community merit badge. One of the requirements is to attend a local governmental meeting, and I could think of nothing finer than joining all of you this evening and listening to you debate the issues of the day. So, thank you, we are here.
Great.
Enjoy your meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Glad to have you boys here. You know, if you have, as we go through the agenda, just, we can use the whole meeting as a teaching moment, I guess. And, not sure if we want to do that, but we'll do the best we can.
They might as well learn now how it works.
So, if you have any questions, you know, I have no problem with an interruption for a question if, Paul, you know, anybody wants to have any questions answered, we'll be happy to do that for them. Okay, so, seeing no one else, we will move on to our agenda. So, if we could, we have two items on our consent agenda. We have a motion on this.
Move to accept the consent agenda, items number one and two.
Second on that?
Second.
Okay. Any questions? Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll move on to our new business, item number one.
Item number one, Mayor, is Jane Giorgini, the market master for the Berlin Farmers' Market, requesting a waiver for the Planning and Zoning Commission's special event application fee. The fee is $150. There's also a $60 state fee. $58 goes to the state, $2 is retained by the town. That cannot be waived, so they're requesting the fee waiver for $150.
But we can't waive the state fee?
No.
Oh, why not? Just kidding, just kidding. Okay, so, we have a motion on that?
Jump in, sorry I'm late to go.
Sure.
Move to approve the request by Jane Giorgini to waive the special event fee of $150 for a proposed farmer's market.
Thank you. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Glad to see the farmer's market is alive and well, and that's great. Gonna get going again, so, good. Hearing no discussion, all is in favor?
Aye.
opposed, so moved, thank you.
Agenda item number two, the Kensington Congregational Church on Percival Avenue is holding a community social fundraising event on Saturday, June 10, 2017. This is their fourth annual block party or festival on the hill. They are requesting, they have requested to close Sheldon Street from intersection of Percival Avenue to Reeve Center, to the Reeve Center parking lot. They're expecting 600 to 800 guests to attend. They are requesting that any and all fees for the police support, and it's itemized in the request here, approximately between $1,880 and $2,880 be waived.
Glad to see you guys back and continuing the social there, that's great. I know it's been growing every year, that's good. So, can we take a motion on this?
Move to approve the request of the Kensington Congregational Church to waive all fees associated with having Berlin police support at their fourth annual festival on the hill event and the road race on Percival Avenue on Saturday, June 10, 2017. The approximate fee to be waived is between $1,880 and $2,880.
Okay, is there a second on that?
Second.
Discussion, any discussion?
Mayor, just a question on the range of the amounts. It looked like it depended on the rate of the officers involved. Do we have any feel of where that's, where that's gonna land based on past events? Mr. Clent, Dr. Clent, has any insight in that or not?
I wasn't really prepared for that question, but it could be because of the range, whether it's a supervisor or not, and it would depend on how many traffic posts they need, depending on the route, and I believe it's the same as, it's the same as last year. So, those are the two things that would be contention on.
Okay. And do we know what it was last year?
We do have a plan. I don't have it with me, but there is, there is an op plan for that with the, with the posts.
Well, it does indicate a maximum amount there, so, I'm comfortable with that. I'm sure we'll handle it appropriately.
Right, so, we'll do it, we'll do it as economically as possible.
Thank you.
Okay, great. But, hearing no further discussion, motion on the floor, all is in favor?
Aye.
opposed, so moved, thank you.
Agenda item number three is also for the Kensington Congregational Church Festival. They're requesting to have the special event application fee of $150 to be waived. The same rules apply, you can't waive the $60 state fee.
Okay, great. Motion on this?
Okay. Move to approve the request by Gwen McCann of Kensington Congregational Church to waive the planning and zoning application special event fee of $150 for the festival on the hill event with a 5K road race.
Great, second on that?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
opposed, so moved. So, welcome back again, glad to see it growing, and you guys are, you know, doing great there, and some great food, and you had the run, this is the second year for, right, you had the run last year, right, as I recall, so, second year for the run, so, great, good luck.
They only guaranteed us sunshine.
Oh, good, well, I'm glad, I'm glad they do that, that's what they do at plenty, so they guarantee things. We wouldn't go there, we wouldn't guarantee that, no. So, good, let's hope it all works out for you, and, you know, good luck. I will tell you that, I think one year, wasn't last year, the year before it rained, I think, right before last year?
Last year.
Did it rain last year?
Yep.
Okay, I know whenever it rained, at least the lines were lower. I mean, I know you wanted more people, but I did go, it was, the lines were less, but I know we want more people, so we'll hope for, we'll hope for no rain, so.
We appreciate the support of the town, it really is a great community event.
Yeah, it's great, great, good luck, we'll see you there. Thanks.
Okay. Agenda item number four, to accept a donation from the Myrna Paulus Senior Center Fund and appropriate said funds. Upon her death, the senior center member, Myrna Paulus, a fund was established through the community foundation in Greater New Britain for the benefit of the Berlin Senior Center. This year, they would, they're contributing $9,810. The money has to be used for furniture, equipment, or visual aid equipment, computers, or even subsidizing bus trips per the original agreement. So, they're requesting that you accept that and designate the money.
Okay, great, thank you. Motion on this?
Okay. Move to accept a donation of $9,810 and deposit these funds into the Myrna Paulus Senior Center donation account and appropriate said funds to the Senior Center Furniture Account, the Computer Account, and Programs and Activities Account.
Second on that?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mayor, just a question, I'm not sure if the town, the town manager may know, but in our budget discussions, there was a lot of discussion around chairs with arms built into them, and furniture is one of the items here. Are you aware whether that's gonna go towards some of those chairs that they are considering replacing, or is it different furniture?
I don't know if this specifically goes toward that, but we could check on that for the next meeting.
It's different furniture, I asked Cindy about, Tina, about it. So, it is different furniture, because they're getting the chairs somehow another way, right?
Okay, I knew, I had heard we were covering the chairs in a particular manner, I wasn't sure if it was this one, but it's, it's good to hear that it's, the chairs are gonna be covered as well as another area here with this generous donation.
Okay, great. Any other comments, questions, all is in favor?
Aye.
opposed, so moved, thank you.
Agenda item number five is to approve the purchase and waive the bidding process of the replacement and installation of the police radio system for Motorola, Inc. through the Utility Communications Company. As you know, we talked about replacing the, the police radio system. John Clent is here to discuss any details.
Yeah, what, give us a, I know, we've heard a lot, but why not a little bit more, while you're here? I think we kinda know the story, but. Okay. Motorola, we have Motorola equipment for 33 years, 34 years, and it's been highly reliable, so we wanted to stay with Motorola. Motorola is a sole source supplier. They work through a dealer rep, which is our utility communications, is the one that we, we use. It's all bid on state contract, everything in this is, you can see by the attachment, is, has already been bid on state contract. They're sole source, which is the reason we're asking to waive the bid process. The price came in lower than we expected with the contingency in there, and the bonding cost will be under the 1.8 million that was approved, so. Like I said, this radio system does need to be replaced, so it's not a luxury item. It's failed on us once already, we had to get parts from, we had to scavenge parts basically to fix it, because they don't make them anymore. But, again, it's been highly reliable, we get 34 years out of it.
It's pretty good, 34 years.
Yeah, not bad.
Yeah, that's great. You know, I can't think of, there's no other, I mean, in my past career and your lengthy career, there's nobody but Motorola, right? I don't think there's any other.
Oh, no, there are other vendors.
But, but, but nobody like Motorola?
Nobody, no, that's pretty much the standard for the industry.
The gold standard there, I think, too, right?
Right. Like I said, it's been very reliable, we have Motorola equipment now.
Yeah.
You, you know, there are others out there, obviously, but.
Yeah, yeah, no, I haven't seen too many, you know, most of the things I've been involved in, I know we all use Motorola on the federal level as well, so, anyway, okay, but let's, let's make a motion, and then we'll, if we have any other questions.
Move to waive the bidding process since Motorola is a sole source supplier, and this equipment has already been bid under the state contract, and purchased the radio system from Motorola, Inc. through its dealer representative, Utilities Communications, Inc., for a price not to exceed $1,800,000, as this is in the best interest of the town.
Second on this?
Second.
Discussion, questions, yes, Dave?
Just a question for Mr. Clent. This system is a digital system compared to an analog previous, or is this?
Yes.
I thought there was some differentiation there.
Well, different, yeah, well, everything's going digital now, so, you know, if we put a system in now that was analog, in 10 years, it might not, you know, so we're looking forward to make sure that it's digital. It's what they call P25 compliant. This system also has, it's basically a one-for-one equipment swap-out with newer equipment that's digital. We did, I was able to obtain two additional 800 megahertz frequencies, which is extremely hard to do, but we got, we have three of them right now. We can only use one of them in a, in a full, you know, what we call duplex mode, car-to-car, headquarters can hear it. So, this new system will have an additional frequency that we'll be able to use that way. So, for, right now, like the fair, we have to go on a tactical channel, and headquarters can't hear them. So, this way, we'll be able to switch any, excuse me, switch everything over to that other channel, and won't interfere with our regular operations, and they'll still be, headquarters will still be able to hear it. So, it's an upgrade in that sense, but it really, it's a one-for-one swap-out for, for digital equipment.
What are the other digital providers in, in radio equipment today?
Well, you've got Harris, Tate, Kenwood, there's, there's a bunch of them out there.
Were they invited to participate in the state bid?
I'm not aware, I, I believe they were, but I don't know. I have not, I didn't do the state bid, so I don't know.
Okay. Just, it appears to be more of a single source rather than a sole source, if there's other, other providers there. What is the other compelling reasons for the selection of Motorola over any other digital systems out there?
Well, we wanted to get the best, and we have Motorola now, and it's proven to be reliable, so we looked at that, that, we didn't look at anybody else other than Motorola for that reason.
Okay.
In terms of actually doing the replacement, will there be any downtime with the dispatch office and the cars while they are doing the turnover, and if so, so that, okay?
No, they would, they would have to make sure that we were up on both systems until the new one was ready to go up. They're actually gonna remove dispatch into the sergeant's office and rebuild that room, and then, so, they would have to make sure that we are fully operational at all times.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanna say, I know a couple years ago, when you first brought this up, you were looking at going back to, you know, using the same conventional equipment, and I'm glad, you know, maybe we waited a year or two, but you investigated the digital, and that's the way things are going, and I think I would have hated to spend, you know, a little, probably closer to half, a little, more than half of this, and then have it be obsolete in a few years.
Well, it would have been, the equipment cost is not that much more for the digital, it's, I mean, it's, you know, as a percentage, it's probably 10% more for digital, because it's really the programming of the radio, not the hardware. So, but you, you know, we looked at that, because that was brought up in the budget hearings, and we talked about that, and so we looked at that and talked to our vendor and said, you know, you're probably better off going with the digital in the long run. Okay.
Okay. Anything else? We're good? Okay, we have a motion on the floor, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved, thank you. Chief?
Agenda item number six.
So, for our Boy Scouts in the audience, you know, we gotta make this a little bit interesting for you, you know. So, one of the things we need to do as a council, you know, is that local government is to, you know, make sure that our residents are protected, obviously, by the police department, and, you know, we have, obviously, have to make sure that our police department, our fire department, and really all town services have the proper equipment that they need. And one of the things, as you all know, from watching way too many probably police shows that are out there, is that they need to, they have a radio and they have to communicate with each other, so, the radio system has become obsolete in Berlin here for the police department, so we are, you know, going to borrow some money and pay it back, but the money will allow us to go ahead and get a brand-new radio system for our police department and keep our police safe and our town safe, so they can communicate with each other. So, that's one of the things we do as a council, so, anyway, moving on, yeah.
Okay. Agenda item number six is for the school security festival projects. Currently, there is $250,000 appropriated for school security deposits. After design and evaluation, it was determined a total of a half a million dollars was needed to, to complete the projects at the four schools. They had Friar Associates work with the school board, and it determined that through the school construction division, that the work falls under priority funding, and the town can get reimbursement of 45.36% on the entire project if completed application received by June 30. The rate drops to 42.8% if it's received after June 30. The first step in the application process is to pass the attached resolution, and Eva Gallup is here to answer any questions.
Okay. Yeah, come on up, why not, right? You're here, might as well say a couple words, right? How we doing tonight?
Great, how are you?
Good.
Okay. What do you wanna know?
I don't know. Wanna do our motion first, and then if we have any questions? Let's, if we could take a motion on this, on these resolutions?
Move to approve the following resolutions. Resolve that the Town Council authorize the Berlin Board of Ed to apply to the Commissioner of Education to accept or reject a grant for school security vestibules at Hubbard, Griswold, Willard, and the McGee Middle School, and resolve that the Public Building Commission is hereby established as the building committee with regard to the school security vestibule, vestibules at Hubbard, Griswold, Willard, and McGee Middle School, and resolve that the Town Council hereby authorize, authorizes at least the preparation of schematic drawings and outline specifications for the school security vestibules at Hubbard, Griswold, Willard Elementary Schools, and the Catherine McGee Middle School.
Okay, great. Second on that?
Second.
Any questions, yes?
So, my question is on process. This estimated amount of $500,000, that was given to you by building?
Friar Associates.
By Friars, okay, so, this has not gone out to bid, we don't, do we have an architect, or?
We have the architect, so we went out to bid for the architect, because through Capital Equipment Site and Building is where the money was appropriated to during last budget cycle, so we were starting to move ahead, so we went out to bid for the architect. In reviewing everything and going through the design and what was required and what was suggested, that's where the prices came, came to. So, the most expensive option was $498,000. So, we were trying to go with three options, but even the least expensive option was $356,000. So, it's a, if we don't go forward with trying to get the construction to do all five, all four schools, sorry, all four schools, then we have to pick and choose which schools we, we're gonna be doing. So, it was, this was an option to try to get all four schools done for a least amount of money, but, so, yes, we bid out Friars. Friars went through all the steps. We were getting ready to go out to bid for someone to do the work when the prices came back, and that's when it was suggested, let's try the state of Connecticut and see if it falls under a construction project, and it does.
Okay. So, it's already gone to public building and gone through all the?
No, it has, no, no.
No, so?
No, we had done it internally, because we, we were just gonna pursue it that way when this, this option came, came to face.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So, we gotta start the whole process?
Um, I'm not sure if we have to bid out the architect again, because it's already been bid, so it falls under that, it's just going forward with that, yeah.
And then, what was it for, reimbursement of 40?
45.
45%?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's great, yes, Dave?
When we set this, the funds for the construction on this, there was some estimates, and I'm not sure exactly where those came from, it was presented in the budget, and that's where that, the figure of the amount came from, but, do you know what that estimate was based on compared to the one now with the Friar Tuck? If you don't know, that's fine.
I was gonna say, I don't remember.
Okay.
Sorry.
Yeah, and I know that there was discussion, we had talked somewhat about whether we'd wanna do, you know, we could still spend the amount that was set aside, but we'd only get one or two, or maybe even three vestibules done. I think there was some rationale on why you wanted to go look a little further, and fortunately, discovering, not discovering yet, you know, it was an option to look at that the state might reimburse to.
Right, it, it was an option to do all four schools rather than pick and choose which schools to do, not having the controversy of how come my school didn't get chosen over your school.
So, I think that, you know, worked, worked out, it was just a little puzzling that, that we didn't know that the estimate was just so far off from, from the beginning.
Right.
And, we're just, you know, for, for future sakes and other projects that may come up, just to understand, maybe lessons learned, why that one may have been as far off, and I don't think it needs to be addressed here in handling this particular agenda item, but something to consider.
Are you stating that we didn't ask for the right amount of money?
I'm wondering if the estimate was not?
Originally, we asked for $500,000. We were reduced to 250, if that's what you're trying to say.
So, what I'm finding out is though, they are saying, when you asked for the 500, was it based on this estimate that came later on?
It wasn't based on this estimate, because this came after the fact. It was based on figures that we had at the time, but I don't remember where those figures came from when we, when we put the capital budget together.
And you can follow up with me later on where those came from, that would be fine.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes.
That state funding would apply even if we didn't, you know, it didn't, we couldn't do all four schools, right? Or do we have to do all the schools in the district in order for that funding to apply?
It will go, whatever, whatever we put through will get the state reimbursement for that, so if we don't do all four schools, then yes, the schools that go through will have that state reimbursement.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, great. Motion on the floor, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Agenda item number seven, economic development report to the Town Council. Chris Edge is here to deliver the report.
Okay. Welcome, Mr. Edge.
Thank you very much, council members. Thank you for an opportunity this evening. I will be somewhat brief. A couple things happening recently, companies which have come to town. First is Olson Construction Management Services. They've purchased the former Northeast Utilities building in the corner of Demming Road and Christian Lane, currently in the process of doing some major renovations. I'm gonna be giving it a new look, new windows. Great company to be located from East Hartford, and a nice addition here in town. Company NECA, which is the Connecticut chapter of the National Electrical Contractors Association, located in Building 3 of Stick Village. The good thing is that basically is a trade organization, and they do training for electrical contractors through our Connecticut. ABC Hydraulics, this is a company that works very closely, particularly with construction companies on repairing different vehicles, and otherwise, they're gonna be building a brand-new 5,000-square-foot building on Willowbrook Drive. It was most recently used by a landscaping company. If you look at it now, the site is largely, pretty much just a big paved parking lot. They're gonna be taking a good portion of that, making it green, gonna be a great little company relocating from Rocky Hill. Couple interesting things, excuse me, international companies coming to Berlin. The first is FSB, and I will pronounce it out for you, it's Franz Schneider Brakel, and what they are, is they're a manufacturer of high-end hardware, similar to what Asa Ablloy does. They relocated from the shoreline to 24 New Park. The nice thing, too, is another great company in bringing jobs here to town and filling a vacant space that's been there for quite a while, so we're excited about that. The other is Steelwrist. Steelwrist is a Swedish company, this is gonna be their first location in the United States. What it is essentially, the best way to describe it is, on a piece of construction equipment, essentially, it comes down, dig, turn, and drop. Theirs essentially has literally a steel wrist that turns. What it does, it makes the process easier, quicker, and we're gonna have, hopefully, contractors from throughout the area coming. Essentially, it's a manufacturing showroom, so you can go in, take a look at it, if you like it, you'd send your construction equipment to Tyler Equipment further down the turnpike, put it in the piece of equipment, send it to your job site. The nice thing to it will really be very nice, as soon as they're up and running, we're gonna hopefully do a nice press release, get some folks out there. It's exciting to have this company choose Berlin to have their first location in the United States. Couple upcoming things, Accurade Dealership, they're working on it, hopefully be paving soon, hoping a June opening.
Can I ask a question about that?
Please.
The retail building?
Yes.
Next to it, that also opening in June, do they have tenants, or?
Um, right now, they're working on tenants. One of the bigger issues is, because it's not paved and there's no cars there yet, interest has been waning. I think when they do open up, there will be more interest. They actually have a commercial agent who's a retail specialist working on it, out of North Haven, I'm talking to him every couple weeks. Likely, it's going to be one tenant will be followed by other tenants. I know right now, what I've been talking to them about is a food option in the very front, which essentially was set up with an outside patio, nothing to announce yet, but still working with them, and hopeful we can get something good there. Building 4 of Stick Village is currently under construction, the hope is in the fall of 2017 it'll be open. They've also brought a commercial agent on board to help lease that up. Also working with a commercial agent who works specifically with restaurants, working to try to bring some more options, whether it's Farmington Avenue or other locations, brought him around town, and working with a couple vacant spaces and property owners, and, again, hopeful we can do something there. A couple quick events upcoming, we're gonna be doing our EDC Awards Night on May 24th, that is gonna be at Shuttle Metal Country Club. We'll have invites out to everyone for that, and then we're gonna be doing another commercial bus tour around town. We had done one in the fall, essentially bringing in businesses, real estate agents, companies to come through, see properties around town, and then likely to have a nice barbecue afterward. We had done one in the fall, essentially bringing in businesses, real estate agents, companies to come through, see properties around town, and then likely to have a nice barbecue afterward. So I will take any questions if you have any.
Great. It's Stick Village, building four, how many buildings are there?
Uh, there's five total, that building's gonna be 5,000 square feet. Right now, building one is completely filled by pro, pro-health, pro-natural, building two, Realty Three, and a small vacancy, building three has Dr. Gallo, a salon, and the electrical contractors, and then building four is currently being constructed.
Okay. Great, any other questions for?
Any news on Mary's Bakery?
They are supposed to come and pave it in the month of April.
Okay.
Now that the weather is nicer, I spoke to him about two weeks ago, and I will be calling him by the end of the week, just to remind him.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And hopefully when they pave it, obviously the fence is coming down, I would hope.
I may take it down myself soon, but yes.
We all may just go out there as a community and take it down.
We may go down there, but no, that was the intent. I know that as soon as the fence down, as well as to bring that agent I was telling you guys about through the building, because I think it would be, again, a great location, but with the weather being what it was, we haven't had a chance.
Yeah, they had a nice view of the building, looks nice.
Indeed.
Yeah.
Any word from CIL on the townhouses?
I have not heard anything, no, at this point. We reached out to them, they're, the head of the organization has been away on vacation, but we're hoping to reconnect with them and see their progress.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Agenda item number eight is to request catch basin materials related to roadway repaving projects, approvals of a purchase of thirty, for $30,000 to United Concrete of Yalesville, Connecticut, using Connecticut DAS contract number 14PSX0231.
Okay, thanks, we have a motion on this?
Move to utilize the Connecticut DAS contract number 14PSX0231, purchase the necessary concrete catch basin materials from United Concrete of Yalesville, Connecticut, for an amount not to exceed $30,000.
Second on that?
Second.
Discussion, any discussion on this?
You need this for the roadworks, right?
Yes, yes I do.
Okay.
Okay, here we go, further discussion, all those in favor?
May I just, one other question, in, in the agenda item, it talks about typically person, purchasing from numerous vendors, and is, in this case, it appears we would just go with the one, United Concrete in this case?
We're utilizing United Concrete for this portion, we are, we are also purchased from Cromwell Concrete, Cromwell supplier also, we had an existing purchase order for $7,000 with Cromwell Concrete, so we are buying from two different vendors.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just elaborate a little bit on this?
Sure, absolutely.
The reason that we've come to you and ask you for this is, we, originally it was thought that the, that the purchase order that you approved back in April of 2015 was extended through this year, we realized when we read it that it was only good through January of 2017, that's the reason we've come back and requested this from you. In the future, what we will do is, going forward, and I did talk to the mayor a little bit about this, is we will go out and bid these and not utilize the contracts, we thought this was an existing contract that was extended, so, okay?
Thank you.
Okay, motion on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved?
Agenda item number nine is to award the bid for milling and reconstruction of road projects, this would be going, this would be to Tilcon of Connecticut, New Britain. Again, it's under a state of Connecticut, DAS services contracts, as itemized in the, in the information that we've given to you.
Okay, motion on this?
Okay, move to approve utilizing the state of Connecticut, DAS services contracts for the 2017 construction season for the purpose of reconstructing and paving roadways, award to Tilcon Connecticut, Inc. of New Britain, Connecticut.
Second?
Second.
Questions? Probably the same question on this, right, we didn't bid, we didn't bid this out either?
No, we were in the process of bidding this out when Adam left, left the town. I had actually gotten the previous contracts, a big process that I had put together previously, but when Adam left, so, at this point, we felt it was important, important to get out and get the roads going, we've sat Tilcon, we've got the schedule of about five and a half miles of roads to do this year, and we'd like to get started on doing the roads. Now, we did do, we do also have the alternate bids this year for the extra work on the side that we talked about last year, so we're not, we are not sole sourcing, let's say we have the same situation with last year, we have to, we, we need to have a contractor come in and remove asphalt and things, we could use somebody other than Tilcon for that work, because previous contracts that you've awarded allow us to use other contractors for emergency situations, they could bring in trucks and, and equipment to handle that. So we're not, so we have multiple sources for that work. This particular contract only deals with the milling and paving, and also, it has on here, that it gives you the milling and paving specifications that they come from the state. So, in the future, this would be pulled out.
Yeah, I mean, right, I mean, you mentioned that, obviously you will be hiring a new procurement officer, so.
Yes.
You'll be able to bid these things out. Okay, hearing nothing further, motion on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved, thank you.
Agenda item number 10 is the replacement of High Road Bridge 07112, we opened the bids on March 23rd, we had a total of seven contractors, the low bid was for Martin Laverro Contractor of Bristol, and the total amount of $1,34,451.25. The details of the bridge is, the sufficiency rating of the bridge is such that it needs to be replaced, 50% of the funding comes from local and state grant money, and the other 50% is supplied by the town.
Okay, motion on this?
Move to authorize the temporary town manager to enter into a contract agreement number 2017-24 with Martin Laverro Contractor, Inc. of Bristol, to replace the High Road Bridge, number 07-112, in the amount of $1,34,451.25, and authorize the temporary town manager to increase the contract value through change orders, in an amount not to exceed $1,137,896.38.
Okay, second on?
Second.
All right, discussion?
All right, so, pleading ignorance, where is this bridge exactly?
It's on High Road, it's on, that's?
Which, in New Britain side, or like, south, going south or going to?
It's a dip, Chamberlain, toward Chamberlain Highway is where it is.
Okay.
It's in a, you probably don't even know you go over.
Well, because I live there, and I don't know where that one is, which is a little concerning to me.
It's a box culvert, or it's a pipe now, and we're replacing it with a box culvert, you know, we call it a bridge, many of these bridges are, are pipes that were put in either after the 55 flood or sometime in that duration.
Okay.
And so, when you go over, you probably really don't know it, the pipe is actually very deep, so that's the reason we have to, the project's more expensive than we probably would like it to be, but you have to dig, you have to excavate a lot of soil off to get the pipe out, and then replace it with a box culvert.
Okay, so, my next question, do we anticipate any problems like we're having over on Farmington?
I would say not, because that area over there, there was no gasoline station, or there's no houses. The, right now, we're working on three easements, two of the easements are with a resident who owns the property adjacent, they've been very good to work with, the other ones with the New Britain Water Company, we've met with Ray Esponda, and I don't expect any problems. No, this, this is a, this project over here is a pretty straightforward replacement, you're not building abutments or anything, you're really just digging it out, replacing with a box culvert and putting it back.
Do you anticipate having to close that section of road while you do it?
Oh, yeah.
Do you know how long, how long you're anticipating?
Normally, what you do is you try to do in one, in one construction season, we'd like to get this started, once we close it, you know, and let's say we close it in the end of May, early June, it would be closed until October, November, that's, that's the goal. I don't normally like to go through winter, as we did over here.
Okay, and, and residents affected will be notified?
They'll be told, as part of the bid package, what they have to do is the contractor, the engineer comes up with a, with a detour route, and that's part of what you submit as part of the package to DOT when you're doing the project.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Dave?
In evaluating the bidders, I know we put on here a change order amount, was history of their change orders evaluated by the firm that evaluated the bids?
No, that, that's a, that's an amount that the contract, that the consulting engineer who helps us with the project goes through and determines based on a percentage of the project. Yeah, it's contingency, you work, you work with DOT to determine what you think inadequate contingency is.
I guess more to my question was whether, in the evaluation of the bids presented, if the individual bidders were evaluated on their history of change orders and other projects that may be publicly available to us.
They're evaluated based on their cost, this particular contractor has not, does not have a long history of doing this type of project, they've been typically, they've been projects that are associated with streetscapes, paving contracts, things like that, they have not done a lot of, of bridges. So, to answer your question, it normally, you would look at this, it goes to the low bidder generally, there's an evaluation based on their history, they do talk to other, other, like oftentimes, as a, as a public works director, I will get a call saying, you know, what's your history been with this, with this particular contractor? Now, this contractor is the one who did the main street, streetscape, just so that you know, I, I should tell you that. But I have, he's also done, they have also done many other projects that I've been involved with in other towns, and this one down here, this has been an unusual project, most times they came in under budget, or within budget and on time, this, this project of mystery has been different.
That was very nice.
Where is this bridge, or this pipe?
It's, it's, it's on, it's on High Road, it's a dip, and in, at the bottom of the dip, and there's a road that goes off to the right, forgive me, I'm not as familiar with...
Is it, when, as you're coming down to the V where it actually meets Chamberlain Highway? Is it on that end?
Yeah, it's on that end, yeah, before you rise up.
Huh, before where the horse, oh, where the cave is?
No.
No, I don't.
Shh.
Don't throw anybody off the cave. I'm not as, I know when you go down, there's a road that goes to your right, it's just before that road.
I'm gonna go drive it.
Yeah, yeah, all right. Trying to find it, trying to find it?
Again, you have, the brook goes underneath it, and the brook's well below the, when you go by, the brook is well below the surface of the road. Yeah, I apologize for not being as familiar.
We should know, that's, we live here.
If you were lived here, I could tell you exactly where it was.
Find it, we'll find it. We'll have a hunt for the culvert we're looking for in place. Maybe the Boy Scouts can help us.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved?
Okay, agenda item number 11, this, this, this request is for to take the Berlin High School rebates from EverSource and United Illuminating to accept those, those, those grants and appropriate those to capital projects as identified in the, in the prepared document for you. And the rebates were, in the total amount from EverSource, of $171,961, and $163,657 from United Illuminating Company, they had not previously been appropriated, as part of our budget, we, the town council asked if we could use that money, we looked at using that money for these capital projects.
Okay, have a motion on this?
Okay, move to accept the rebate of $171,961 from EverSource, and $163,657 from United Illuminating Company, for work completed on the Berlin High School project, and appropriate the funds into the various capital accounts as outlined above in the agenda item.
Second on that?
Second.
Discussion, so, we already put this in, this was already put in the budget, right? From this, we anticipated these coming.
This is calculated into the budget that is being presented and considered in the upcoming referendum.
Okay, well, I guess that's good, we got the rebates. That's great. Yes?
So, these funds are, come from a regulated, the, the industry is regulated on this, these funds are handled by and directed by the regulatory agencies, so I don't have any, although I work for EverSource, I don't have any control or influence on what is decided with these, so I, although, working for that entity, I'll still be voting on this particular item, but I don't have any, it's, it's regulated by the regulators on what takes place with those funds and how they're distributed.
So you can't get us anymore, is there some?
My pockets are empty, mayor.
All right, okay, all right, all right. Okay, any other comments, questions, a motion on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved?
Okay, agenda item number 12 is to appoint the temporary town manager to, interim town manager, the temporary town manager position is, in by charter, is allowed to be there for 90 days, after which time typically you move the temporary town manager to the interim town manager, so this is, this is to make that, to make that change.
Okay, we have a motion on this?
Okay, move to approve the appointment of Jack Healy as the interim town manager effective May 2nd, 2017.
Move a second?
Second.
Discussion, so, one of the things that, hopefully tonight, even maybe right now, we have to set another meeting, we haven't had a search committee meeting, I know we've been busy with the budget, and actually Denise Parsons couldn't make it one night, we were gonna have the meeting, so we can, I'm, I'm thinking of, before we, next week, I'd like to, if we can do it, I think next week, we don't, I don't think we have any meeting scheduled that I know of, we could pick a day.
We got a vote.
And then we'll have, I know we have some applications that are in by the deadline, we have, I think, I want to say four or five resumes that she wants to present to us, and we have obviously the search firms that came in, so we can review those too in our meeting. But in, in the meantime, obviously, the 90 days will, will run out before we continue with our, our plan for the search, so that's the reason for this item. Comments, questions?
I do have a question about just the charter, changing from temporary, which was a state-allowed appointment versus interim, which I believe is in our charter, and because the permanent town manager has to reside in town, does that apply to interim as well? Is there going to be an issue around that?
No, there's not an issue, because the appointment of the interim town manager is pursuant to Charter Section 5-1, and there's no, there's no residency requirement, as a matter of fact, 5-1 says at the time of appointment, said manager need not be a resident of the town or the state of Connecticut.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, we have a motion on the floor, so, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so moved? And maybe when our council communications, we'll see if we can pick a day, we'll get there in a minute. Okay, so we are, town managers report, Mr. Healy?
A few things just want to bring you up to date on, the first thing is, is good news, the tennis courts are being used, they're not, they're, they're not in their final condition, but they have been painted, and I believe that yesterday they had their first home match on them, I don't know if they won or lost, but I know that they were able to use them. The ground, the, the, the buildings, the grounds department have been out, and they've been doing the, the seating and backfilling around them. All that's really left to do is, once the season's over, is to put the final coating down, so that will change the, the, the surface of the courts, and also, we currently, Doug Solak's working with an engineering firm, looking at the lighting, we've, we've had many people look at the lighting, and we can't get a commitment, so we decided to have an engineering firm come in, look at the lighting, in fact, we're going to meet with the planning and zoning about this. The lighting currently is at a certain lumens, which would not be quote-unquote "state-of-the-art", so if we go, we could go with the LED, but we would design it either to stay at this current lumens, or increase it to, to where it should be by state-of-the-art. If we do that, you know, increase the, the light around the court, we're not sure how that would impact the residents, so we're taking a look at that right now, you know, if it's brighter, we don't want to have people complaining it's too bright.
Are the current lights in the high school parking lot LEDs?
They should be, yeah.
Which, they should be, right?
Yeah, they should be, yeah. But, but you didn't design, see, these, this would increase the light capacity, so...
The amount of candle power.
Candle power, foot candles, yeah, so, you know, currently, I think they're at 18 foot candles, and they're supposed to be 30 foot candles, so, okay?
Okay.
We just, we want to make sure we do this, we don't, we don't, yeah.
Yeah.
So that, that's where that stands. The streetscape, the first repair is complete, the crosswalk, we did complete that overnight exercise to try to minimize the impact on the residences and businesses, and, so that was, that was completed. It was about an hour later than it was supposed to be, but it, it was done, so that was before the businesses opened. As a, just an update, we are at, for, for the next few months, we're going to be shy in staffing at the animal control, Katie's out with, on maternity leave, we've made arrangements with, with Cromwell, and also amongst our own staff to be able to cover the times, so, but, we will be shy one person for the next few months. Today, just as an update, they had the first design meeting, if there's any questions of the Worthington Meeting House, Doug Solak's had in on the meeting, so if there's any questions, but they are started, they are working with the architect, and developing, doing the design development documents. There was an issue with the billing, I'm not sure, I'd like to update you on this, with the billing from the Water Control Commission.
Yes, that's good, I had that question, a couple bills came in, yeah.
Well, yeah, there's two bills, the first bills went out, and for some reason, the sewer bills were correct, but some of the, some of the bills did not, did not include the wa, any water, there was, there was zero on the water.
What a deal.
Yeah, nobody complained, I bet.
Well, they didn't complain about that.
I didn't get one of those zeros, what happened?
But anyway, they, they had to go back and reprint the bills and send them... But anyway, they had to go back and reprint the bills and send them out again. We've had several people call about that. The cost of the town for... Or cost of the Water Control Commission's about $1,000 for additional envelopes and postage and things. Kevin Delaney's been working, looking into it. It's something to do with the software that they used. There was a mistake... There was an error in the software that produced the bills. It wasn't caught before it went out. Kevin has implemented corrective plans, and what they'll do in the future, any bills that go out, there'll be two people checking them prior to leaving the office. So, we've put in corrective measures. It won't happen again, but it did happen, so if you get any questions, that's what occurred. It did cost the Water Control Commission about another additional $1,000 for postage and envelopes.
So, the second bill is the corrected bill?
Is the correct bill. Yeah, and it includes your water fee, so...
I mean, mine was the same.
Okay.
So, they must have sent it out regardless?
Some of them were correct. Yeah, they... The issue was they couldn't tell which ones went out with the wrong amount, which went out with the right amount. So, some people, like yourself, got this... The bill was identical. Other people had zero the first time, and they got a corrected bill.
Okay.
Over on the Easter holiday, there was a water leak at the high school in a new section of the school. Doug's here if there's any questions, but we are working with it. We had a lot of work done on mechanical systems during the vacation time. I think... I don't know if I've reported you, but there have been some issues with the mechanical system at the high school since we've finalized the project. We are working with the contractors to correct those. Over the break, there were several things. We flushed the systems, did a lot of work on the systems. Apparently, when one of the contractors left, he left a bleeder valve open. Over the holiday, the bleeder valve leaked, obviously, and caused some damage in the school. Doug worked with our contractors, and there was no school mist. The classrooms were affected, but they were ready for opening. There's, I think, a couple holes in the walls, and the radio station is down currently because of the damage. The contractor has a... We're working with Steve Wasney and the contractor, and at this point, the contractor's taking responsibility. We're just working on how to work out the finances to get this done. And then the last thing, we... The sidewalk bids have been received, and the good news is that they were lower than we thought they would be, so we're going to probably do all, but maybe one or two alternatives. So, we will be constructing new sidewalks in several areas in town, primarily on Burnham Street, Four Rod Road, and Kensington Road. Those are the primaries. And then there's a few other places in town, but they did come in lower than expected.
Great. Yes?
I know Kevin's been busy with budget, but any movement on tax collector? I just... We're getting closer to July. I want to make sure someone's hired and up and running before kind of busy season, and I don't know if he's had an opportunity to start interviewing or looking.
Yeah, we did interview people for that position. At this point, that's on hold. He's looking at... Looking at how that office is going to function, so he's looking at some alternatives. But yes, we've got a plan in place, and Lucy's right now currently is managing the office. But yeah, we've interviewed people. Right now, he wasn't comfortable with the ones we interviewed, so we're still looking.
Okay.
Okay. And as far as we've also put out for the purchasing manager, which right now to me is the one we really need, that position's been posted internally and externally, and it closes, I believe, either next week or the following week, and we're going to fill that position.
So, we're gonna reorganize the tax office between tax and the tax assessor's office?
Yeah.
To be a little bit more efficient?
As... We've had a lot of input from people that we need to look at those two offices. We are looking at that office, and if we could, you know, if there's ways of reallocating the work assignments. So, we are doing that.
Great. Okay. Thank you, Jack. So, special committee reports? Yes?
And just a reminder of our special town council meeting tomorrow evening at 7:00. It may have gone out at an earlier time, but it is scheduled for 7:00 PM tomorrow evening. We encourage the public to come out and share their thoughts, ask questions, whatever they need to do to understand in preparation for the following week's budget referendum. And location?
Here.
Here.
Here. Here at 7:00, and the board of that will be here too with us if there's any final... Obviously, there's no... You know, we're just gonna... I mean, we'll take more public input if need be and whatever people want to ask us, and we'll also just kind of put out the information again in light of, you know, some changes, obviously, the plus-up to the board of that and things. We could put that out if anyone's here and wants to hear it and wants to address us, so... Any other? I don't think there was any. We've had no meetings, because we've been busy with the budget. So, council communications.
Can I... Actually, it's more of a town manager question, but we can go with council communications. I know golf course opened, so just wondering how kind of opening week went. Everything seems to be running smoothly over there, to your knowledge?
To my knowledge, everything is operating properly. I know the other part of that is, I know I've been working with John Zuck on the purchase of the tent. Originally, they came in with the one bid. We went back out, we got three bids, and so he's... I approved the purchase of the tent.
Okay. So, my communication is the golf course is open. Everybody go golf.
Yeah. Yes?
Just want to follow up, Jack, on the tennis courts. That's why I was a few minutes late. I was attending the track meet. My son's event was the last one, so figures.
Of course.
But I was looking at the tennis courts. I mean, it looks good, and I had to explain to people, you know, because looking at it, it's not finished. But the lights do stand out, and the first thing that comes to my mind is, why didn't we paint them? But I'm glad you brought up something about the lights. You're looking at to do something new there. They're very rusty, and it just looks horrible when you've got a new court, new fence.
We went out... Went out... We've had three contractors that do work for this town on lighting, so we went to those three contractors very early, back in December and January. They were all very reluctant. They were all willing to bid on the actual lighting portion of it, the bulb, you know, the bulb. None of them were willing to bid on doing anything with the poles themselves. So, talking with Doug, what we decided to do, since there was a reluctance, is we... There was some question about their structure, if they're structurally... You know, they've been here so long. So, what we've done is we've gone out and asked the engineering firm to evaluate the poles, make sure the poles are structurally sound. As part of this, the bid package includes completely sandblasting those and refinishing them so that they look... They look new. And I agree, you don't want to build a tennis court and leave the old rusty pole, so that's what we're doing right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other council communications? Anything else? Just one thing I wanted to mention, it's funny you brought that up about our animal control and being down. We've had a brief discussion, right, Jack, with myself, and you, and Deputy Chief Klett with New Britain, with the New Britain Mayor, Aaron Stewart, and one of the issues, we talked about different things, how our communities could cooperate and hopefully save some money and do some other things together. And one of the things we did talk about is animal control. They're interested, because as you know, their animal control facility is right near ours, but it's very, very, in very, very bad shape, and I think they're interested in kind of working with us, and we'll talk some more with them about that, and perhaps what... How that would help us would be, at least in one area we talked about, since they have several animal... I think they have several animal control officers that might be able to help us and fill in and different things, you know, because we only have obviously one full-time and the part-time. So, it made sense to do some more communication, and we might be able to use our animal control shelter to help them, because I think there's... Floods out a lot, and it's in pretty poor shape, so that's something going forward. We'll have to continue that discussion. Everybody seemed in favor of that.
We have... I have made contact with their police chief, because the ACO works for the police over there as part of... As a backup for the time when Kate is out. I'm still working with them. One of the questions they had is their animal controls are actually police, and they want to make sure that a police officer, if they came from New Britain into Berlin, if there was any issue between them and our police station, the department... I've talked to our police department, there is not, because they're here strictly as animal control officers. We've gone that far. So, we are... We have done a little bit of back and forth. I also obtained a copy of a draft, regional agreement that's being used in the Torrenton area, because they have a regional animal controls process, and so I've got a draft of that agreement, so that we... If we get that far, we have something to start with.
I know we did that with Cromwell, I believe, and so you may want to just go back and look to see where there may have been some issues to... So, we can avoid that. And I would be interested in knowing, kind of, besides getting some additional ACOs, what else kind of we're getting from that.
And I have talked to Cromwell also, and I believe it's time for us to renew our contract with Cromwell.
I think Cromwell, I know they share the space. I don't know if we... Do we use them? I don't know if we use their ACOs, do we?
Yeah, only... But strictly as a... It's only in emergencies. And we confirm that... I did talk to them as part of this, and they confirm that they still will support us in emergency situations.
Yeah. Okay. All right, so anyway, that's good that's continuing, and if we can make that work for both our communities, that would be good for our animal control department. Okay. Acceptance... So, moving on to our last agenda items here is our acceptance of minutes, our March 22.
Excuse me?
Yes?
Did you want to set up a meeting for the...
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yes, yes, yes. Yeah, so what do we think next week? And that will be contingent upon... Jack, if we could check with Denise Parsons tomorrow and just make sure... Obviously, we need to have her available.
Referendum's Tuesday, so it can't be Tuesday.
Yeah, we won't do Tuesday. Well, I mean, really, right. Yeah, that's why we won't do Tuesday. So, I don't know, Wednesday or Thursday? Does that work for you guys? What are you thinking? Wednesday, maybe?
Wednesday's better.
Wednesday? Okay, Wednesday. I like Wednesday, too.
I'm not available for either.
For either one?
Yeah, I'm at commitment.
Okay.
You can go ahead and have it, I'm not...
You don't mind?
No.
You sure?
No.
All right. Okay, so you want to pick Wednesday?